All right, I'm going to bring this meeting to order at 7:00. I want to apologize to everyone waiting here and online. We went a little bit over on our closed session. Can we get the -- I want to invite Councilmember Bonilla to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'll notice Mayor Marx Linus is out of town this evening on city business, so I'm filling in for this evening. Let's see, and we don't have any AB 2449 announcements, right? Okay, great. Then let's go straight to roll call. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Councilmember Andrews?
Present.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.?
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Present.
Councilmember Syrup?
Present.
Councilmember Sermanio? Thank you. Mayor Protem Roach?
Present.
And Mayor Salinas is absent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Let's see, so now we do -- oh, okay, I wanted to make an announcement. If anybody's waiting for item number, I think it was item number 11, is it? Item number 10, thank you. The operating capital improvement budget, sorry. Okay, and the, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Oh, the item? Sorry, hold on one second. So just, I was looking for the item number. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so item number 10, the budget has been continued to, I think, is it June 17th?
Yes.
Okay, continued to June 17th. So if anybody's online waiting to discuss that item or in the chambers, we're putting that one off tonight. Thank you. Let's see, okay, and then do we have a closed session announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. The City Council convened in closed session at 5:30 pursuant to published notice on the Brown Act. All members were present. Mayor Salinas appeared remotely pursuant to Government Code Section 54953F, "Just Cause Based on Official Travel on behalf of the legislative body or other state or local agency." There were two items noticed on the agenda. A third was added, which I'll speak to in a moment. The first item, conference with property negotiators regarding Caltrans parcel group eight. Direction was given to the property negotiators; otherwise, no reportable action was taken. Item number two was also a conference with property negotiators regarding two parcels at Depot and White Soul. Direction was given to property negotiators, but otherwise, no reportable action was taken. The third item that was added, was added pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B, where the council voted unanimously, 7-0, moved by Councilmember Goldstein and seconded by Councilmember Andrews, finding that there was a need to discuss an item that arose after the publication of the agenda. And that item was a discussion of public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B, discussion of the acting city manager. And Mayor Protem, I'll defer to you on that report.
Thank you, thank you for that report. And there was also no reportable action for that last item on the city employee item. Thank you. All right, let's see, so now we will move on to public comments. And this is for items that are not on the agenda this evening, so if we have, we don't, do we have any cards for public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any hands online. Is that, do you agree with that? Okay, all right, great, well, then we will close public comment and move on to the city manager's comments.
Assistant City Manager Youngblood is going to start with the city manager comments, and I'm going to finish up.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Roach. We have four items that I'll be discussing, and then I'll turn it back over to Acting City Manager Lawson to finish up. Do we have the presentation? So the first item that I'd like to discuss would be the pavement improvement project. The City of Hayward's annual pavement improvement project is set to begin June 23rd. The project will bring 12.5 million of street and curb ramp enhancements, including new striping for bike lanes and crosswalks, and additional improvements to 65 street segments covering 41 lane miles of roadway. Residents will be receiving 72 hours' notice prior to work happening in their neighborhoods. They will receive this notice from project contractor De Silva Gates Construction. This project is funded through a combination of Alameda County Measure BB, gas tax revenue, state vehicle registration fees, and other sources. Longwood Elementary School visits Hayward Executive Airport. During the month of May, second-grade classes from Longwood Elementary School visited Hayward Executive Airport on three separate dates. The students had the opportunity to sit in a Cessna single-engine aircraft with a flight instructor, listen to live video communication between pilots and air traffic controllers, and learn about four forces of flight, which include weight, thrust, drag, and lift. And they learned about the parts of an airplane among other activities. School visits along with the airport's annual open house in September are two of the ways our executive airport engages with the greater Hayward community. Community Hub at Hayward Public Library. Speaking of community engagement, Hayward Public Library will be hosting a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the community hub starting at 11:00 a.m. this Friday, June 6th. On the second floor of the downtown library, all are invited. The hub is a full-service, one-stop resource center for the public to access City of Hayward and community partner services. The hub is a grant-funded, and it is offered in partnership with Hayward Promised Neighborhoods. It will be staffed by partners representing a variety of organizations and agencies that serve Hayward community, including 4Cs, Eden Youth and Family Center, La Familia, HUSD, and HARD, as well as City of Hayward Departments and Divisions. The hub will be open Monday through Friday. The objective is to make services more accessible at a location that is widely considered a safe and trusted place. Adopt a Pet Day. Last but not least, Saturday, June 7th, is California Adopt a Pet Day. The Hayward Animal Shelter, which is a division of the Hayward Police Department, is participating from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. this Saturday. The shelter's address is 16 Barnes Court. Dogs, cats, and rabbits need new homes. During the event, all adoptions to qualified homes are free and includes spaying and neutering, the first vaccinations, deworming, and microchipping. To view adoptable pets, please visit www.haywardanimals.org/adoptions. I'll now turn it over to the Acting City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As noted earlier, the budget hearing has been moved to June 17th, and we're going to be coming in hot. I think we're working hard to try and get to that sweet spot of around 9 to 10 million is the gap between revenues and expenditures and reliance on reserves. That's our hope. We're working hard tomorrow through the rest of the week for the budget message and agenda that's going to be out probably sometime middle of next week. Also want to let you know that staff are working hard and preparing for the July 4th weekend. That's coming up in about a month. So PD, and fire, and maintenance services, and all of the departments are working on a plan of community engagement, media releases, posting, to try and let the community know this is an extremely challenging weekend, and it is a weekend. July 4th is on a Friday. So it's a really big deal, really, really important that all of our staff members can work together, support the community, let's make it safe, and let's make it a holiday. So finally, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Highway Patrol is deploying new cruisers out on 580 and 238, 880, very, very cool colors, designed to be less visible. So just be aware, drive safely, and so just be safe. Key points on 580 are like right around 150th Avenue, I'm sorry, just, okay, that's it. Mayor Protem, that's it.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Acting City Manager Lawson. Okay, great, moving along. We're going to move on to the consent color, and did anyone want to pull anything? I didn't get any, no. A question, sure, do you want, why don't you, yeah, why don't you go ahead and give your question, and then if it doesn't involve pulling it, then.
Great, thank you. Just a question for item six around PFM asset management and our portfolio management. It says rescind resolution number 2162. Was that updated annually? I found one when I was looking through the database that was passed in 2021. Is that the one we're referring to, or does that resolution number stay the same as it's updated annually?
I don't actually have an answer to that question. Is interim director Ettman online? We can get you that answer.
Okay. I don't want to hold up the item, and I, you know, I apologize for not asking this ahead of the meeting. In the future, if we are going to rescind a resolution, please do include it in the staff packet or the agenda packet. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, then, if we're not going to pull anything, do we, if we can get a motion a second, then I'll go to public comment on.
Move the items.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Andrews, seconded by Councilmember Goldstein. And then let's go to public comment on the item. No, there's no, okay, no president, and I don't see any hands online. Right, great, then we'll close public comment. And again, so it's been moved, can, are we going to vote on this? No, it's unanimous, right? So we don't need to vote. Great, great, thank you. So let's move on to our first public hearing item. Again, I just want to make everyone aware, we have continued item 10, the budget item, that will be heard on June 17th. So we'll move on to item 11, which is the district drive-through zoning text amendments. And I believe that's going to be presented by Director Bowser.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Roach, members of the council, members of the Hayward community. Happy to be here tonight to present this item. I am going to quickly turn it over to Senior Planner Steve Kowalski, who has been managing this effort, and will present the presentation to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, members of the council and members of the audience. Steve Kowalski, I'm the senior planner with the City of Hayward. This is an application for a small number of amendments to the zoning ordinance, along with an accompanying conditional use permit and site plan review application for a new mixed-use development featuring a drive-through coffee shop on a vacant portion of the property at 22101 Hasperian Boulevard. This conditional use permit and site plan review hinge upon approval of the zoning text amendments. So if the amendments are not approved by the council, then the drive-through coffee shop would not be allowed to be built at the site. In January of 2019, the applicant obtained site plan review approval to construct the Home Two Suites by Hilton Hotel on the property, along with a small multi-tenant commercial building where the mixed-use project is now being proposed. In early 2022, while gearing up to build the hotel, the applicant informed staff that the multi-tenant commercial building was no longer economically viable at the site, and asked if it could be replaced with a drive-through coffee shop. Staff presented this idea to the council Economic Development Committee in April 2022, at which time the committee expressed support, but with the caveat that it be part of a mixed-use development to make better, more efficient use of the site. So in March of 2024, the applicant submitted the application to amend the zoning ordinance and obtain approval of a conditional use permit and site plan review for the mixed-use project with the drive-through coffee shop, with a drive-through coffee shop on the ground floor and four small office suites on the second floor. This is an aerial photo of the site. As you can see, when the applicant completed construction of the hotel, he constructed all of the necessary parking, landscaping, and utility connection improvements for the site in anticipation of its eventual development. The site is 1.76 acres in size and has vehicular access via driveways along both Hasperian Boulevard and SkyWest Drive. It shares parking with both the hotel to the south and the adjacent business park to the north via reciprocal access and parking easements. The site is zoned Air Terminal Commercial, or ATC for short, and is designated retail and office commercial in the general plan. The proposed mixed-use building features a 2,345-square-foot coffee shop with drive-through on the ground floor and a 1,912-square-foot second floor containing four small office suites. 16 new parking spaces will be built next to the building, and the site also has access to all the other existing parking around the adjacent hotel and business park. The city owns all of the properties along the western side of Hasperian Boulevard and has established reciprocal parking rights for all of the tenants that occupy those properties. Two outdoor patios will be provided and furnished with cafe tables, chairs, and sunshades for use by the coffee shop's customers, as well as the office tenants. The applicant is proposing to install a decorative plaque outside the entrance to the building that pays tribute to the Tuskegee Airmen and their ties to the community of Hayward, as well as some related murals inside the coffee shop. You can see these tributes in the revised architectural plans that were shared with you earlier this afternoon by the city clerk. This, oops, I'm going to skip the site plan, that's in the plans in your staff report, but just for the audience, this is, this is what the site plan that's being proposed looks like. This slide lists the small number of amendments to the zoning ordinance that are needed to enable the proposed drive-through coffee shop to move forward. The first amendment is just a minor cleanup item meant to clearly differentiate drive-through restaurants and coffee shops from standard sit-down establishments. The second would add drive-through restaurants and coffee shops to the list of uses allowed in the ATC zone subject to approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. The third and fourth amendments would amend the location restrictions for drive-through restaurants and coffee shops by providing an additional exception, allowing them to be located within one-half mile of another drive-through if they are in property located within the ATC zone. And finally, the fifth amendment would increase the maximum allowable size of a drive-through coffee shop from its current limit of only 500 square feet to 2,500 square feet. Staff reviewed the proposal for conformance to the general plan and compliance with the applicable standards for a new mixed-use project with a drive-through coffee shop, and determined that it complies with the standards of the zoning code and is consistent with several goals and policies of the land use and economic development elements of the general plan. This slide lists four of those. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but I just wanted to point out that there are at least four goals and policies in the general plan that the project's consistent with. Now, the Planning Commission reviewed this item on May 22nd and ended up split, three to three, on whether to recommend approval to council. The three commissioners who were not willing to support the project expressed the opinion that there were already too many large chain coffee shops in this particular part of the city, and too many drive-through establishments throughout the city overall. And some of them also felt that the proposed architecture was lackluster. Those three commissioners who expressed support for the project felt that the use would provide a convenient service for residents of the nearby neighborhoods, hotel guests, airport users, and commuters traveling along Hasperian Boulevard, and that it would also help provide economic synergy with the hotel and with other nearby businesses. If the council supports the project tonight, then staff recommends it introduce the ordinance contained in attachment two, codifying the proposed zoning text amendments, and adopt two separate resolutions. The first, set forth in attachment three, approves, would approve the amendments and find them to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And the second, set forth in attachment four, would approve the conditional use permit and site plan review application, allowing the mixed-use project to be built, and finding it to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as well. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll go to council member questions on this. Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for the presentation. I'm curious about pedestrian safety. I know there's a lot of Starbucks in the area already. I think at the top of the block, there's one of the Target, and then one at the corner of the Target Plaza, and then in the southern part of the block, I think this is closer to Chabot, you find another Starbucks. But this is right in the middle, and these are very long blocks on Hasperian. I see this being an amenity for the folks that live in the neighborhood, so they don't have to walk, you know, one mile south or one mile north, but they do have to cross, let's say, you know, between four to six lanes of traffic unless they want to go to the end of the block or go up to the top of the block. So have there been consideration for pedestrian safety or the addition of a crosswalk or flashing lights? I don't want this to just be a drive-through. They have an outdoor patio. I can see this becoming a community amenity, but I want to make sure folks aren't risking their lives to get there.
The resident, the nearby, the adjacent residential neighborhood is across Hasperian Boulevard to the east. There is a signalized intersection at the, where Longwood and Hasperian intersect, and presumably, I mean, most, we can't prevent everybody from, you know, being smart. Most intelligent people will use that crosswalk and wait for the light to turn red and follow the, the pedestrian, you know, will follow the laws. But there, I think that's, that's probably the best I can, I can answer that question, Councilman.
I mean, maybe this is a public works question, but with the addition of something like this, I mean, would this help motivate the creation of a pedestrian crosswalk in this place, or is that?
Yeah, so a traffic study was done for this project, and it was sponsored by the public, the Transportation Division of Public Works. But that, the traffic, the traffic study didn't recommend any, didn't come up with any conclusions recommending a mid-block crosswalk or anything like that. I think it's just because it's of its proximity to the signalized intersection.
Got it, okay. I mean, when you look at having to go up or down because it's right in the middle, you're looking at, you know, doubling or tripling the commute time to get there on foot just because there's no direct route there. So I would hope that, you know, if we move forward with this, we consider how to make it more pedestrian accessible, because that would minimize the amount of cars needed to actually get there. And then just a question, this might be more for economic development, but do we have an idea of how much revenue we tend to generate whenever we do add a Starbucks to our community? Thanks, Paul.
Hi, good evening, Council. Paul Nguyen, Chief Economic Development Officer. Yes, we do have a general estimate. We often don't speak about it publicly, given its proprietary nature, but I'll, within context, store this size is not a significant revenue generator for the city.
Okay, okay, so you're saying it's not a significant revenue generator. Got it, okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I did watch the planning commission meeting, and then I was part of the Economic Development Committee that made comments earlier, but was, wanted to know more about the offices. Was that a change prior? Was it always four offices at the top, or was it a single office proposed prior?
I wasn't aware, originally.
It was always four small offices?
Since, since he submitted to the planning division, which was almost a year ago now.
Okay, great.
And those, just to clarify, those four office spaces aren't set in stone. It can be one large, it's a flex space.
Okay.
So it can be two smaller ones, it can be one. The whole second floor can be a single office.
Okay.
And the developer is here to, and he's prepared to speak to that question.
I just had one quick question about the offices real quick, and the use of them. Oh, turn on the mic. Thank you.
I'm Art Tiedemann, architect, here with my client tonight to discuss any questions you might have or answer them, and talk about the project.
Okay, thank you for coming. I wanted to know about the offices. Would it also be considered, I believe you said it was leased, but if it wasn't leased, were you also considering it to be auxiliary space for the hotel for conferences, or is it only going to be?
No, this was just strictly for office space.
Strictly for offices.
Yeah, and I think it was needed to be part of the mixed use.
Okay.
So we had to add another component to it, and that's how the office came about, and the two-story building came about.
Okay. Is there, in case this becomes vacant, would, would it be an opportunity in the future that can be an auxiliary space for the hotel? The reason why I'm concerned is that sometimes we see small offices not occupied for a very long time, but you have the use there. So I just want to make sure that that is possible.
Yeah, I would think if we would be talking 4,000 square feet or something larger, I would be concerned, but it's 2,000 square feet, and usually, I think, smaller tenants that are looking for a space, this is hard to find space.
Okay.
When these, you know, four spaces at 400 square feet each is the size of a hotel room, so very, very small suites if it gets divided that way. But I'm sure if the developer has a client that comes forward that wants all of the spaces, that's what it will become.
Okay, great. And then some of the comments from Economic Development Committee mentioned what would, I'm looking at the use, but what would make this location different than the other locations? Because that was a concern for a planning commission about the quantity of the use, but just wanted to see, other than the offices, is there something that's going to be a feature that makes this one different? I know the type of use that it's going to be is going to be different in nature because it's a drive-through, so you're targeting a different customer, but I just wanted to hear if there's anything else that would make this one different.
Yes, I think this targets the customer that's driving down the road, and if you look at the, the drive-through is a big add to most Starbucks right now. That's what they're pushed for. People are driving down the road, getting their coffee, driving through and going to work. And I think the key with this one, which makes it, I think, fairly safe pedestrian-wise, is that if you look at the access across the back of the Sky, is it SkyWest on the backside? SkyWest, yeah. And that's really the primary entrance for the queuing of the cars. So, you know, the walkways in front of the hotel and on the street there are pretty much not going to be, you know, a lot of traffic coming through the parking lot from that direction because it's all going to come from the backside. So I think that really plays a huge role here as far as pedestrian-friendly. And then also, we have integrated walkways that, terrorist areas that are open to the hotel side. So the footprint of the building is visually very small in comparison to the space between the offices to the north, I would say, and to the hotel to the south. So that space, if you went out there, I was just out there this afternoon, and it's a big space for a small building. And if you look at the landscaping intent that they have on here, too, and I got to say, I've never seen so much landscaping around a Home Two Suites in my life. It's beautiful landscaping, by the way, but it's probably a lot to take care of. So it's going to have a lot of landscaping around the Starbucks, too, obviously, to mirror, mirror this, but it is a very small footprint. You know, it's more like a kiosk level of, I would call, Starbucks, and it's more, more like a sit-down outdoor café area type of space, so that answers that question.
Yes, and then my last question is, I mentioned in Economic Development Committee, adopt a block. Is the owner interested in adopting a block? Because I picked up a lot of cups from coffee shops over the years, so this will generate trash, so I want to make sure that we are being good neighbors.
Yeah, I think one of the things with the lease is that, you know, as he leases the space, that they will be liable to go around the building two or three times a day, pick up any trash or lose things that are flying around, around the perimeter of the site. I do want to touch on the, the fact that it did come up about the security, and, you know, I flew in from New York, so I just, first time on the site today looking at it. But looking at the site, the first guy I met out there was the security guy who was right at the Starbucks site. So I know they talked about, is this going to be a security problem? But they have really resolved that at the hotel, and actually, inside this camera, you got to love the sophistication and software technology now. Inside of his car, he actually has video screens of all the other cameras around the perimeter of the hotel, so he can see, just sitting there, all what's happening around the whole perimeter. So, and he said, just by his presence being there, you just don't really have, you know, much crime, because I'm like, what's, why are you here? Why, do you have this much crime here? He says, well, since I'm here, there's nothing.
Okay.
So it's good to hear that, though, you know, because that was a big concern, I think, of the.
Yeah, I remember hearing those comments. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and maybe while you're up there, well, let's see, do we have any other questions? No. I just had a quick question about the queuing for the drive-through. Does the queuing sort of go around the parking lot? I mean, around the site, but then where would the spill-out go?
Spill-out actually goes to, again, back out to the north, and then you'd have to back out. back out to Sky West. So it goes around the hotel or the front of the building. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So not on, there's no, there's no way that you would have queuing on Hisparian, I guess is what I'm asking. Okay.
No, no, that's, that's the beauty about it. So if there's pedestrians that are walking from the neighborhood, they got to go down the crosswalk, of course, instead of jaywalking across the street. But then come up the walkway the other way, and that wouldn't, none of those two conflict with one another, so which is nice. So. And I found it very difficult to actually get into this hotel because I had to come in there on the backside. It was pretty easy once I knew where the hotel was, and Google took me right there. But, you know, it, it is kind of like very pedestrian friendly, walking that street there, even though the, the traffic is a large volume. So.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with no other questions, we'll open public comment on this. And I don't, I don't have any, right, no present, nothing online either, right? I don't see anything either. Okay, great. Then we will close public comment and go to Commissioner Questions or, or sorry, Councilmember Questions or Motion. Councilmembers, Emilio.
Yes, thank you. I'm an espresso drinker. I'm, I drink a lot of coffee, and I visit Starbucks and Snappy's Cafe and Neon Cafe, and pretty soon the coffee shop across the street from Buffalo Bills. I do agree with the three planning commissioner comments that we're pro for this. And because of that, I'll move on the motion, I'll move on the item.
Thank you. Councilmember, I think Councilmember Andrews is, oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead. So seconded, moved by Councilmembers Emilio, seconded by Councilmember Goldstein, Councilmember Andrews.
Actually, can I, is it possible if I could have a friendly amendment to include adopt a block as a conditions of approval? Is that possible?
You want to add a condition that they participate in adopt a block? Is that what I understand? And I, I believe she asked for a friendly amendment of the motion maker. So I think she's asking you, Councilmembers Emilio, if you're comfortable with that added
I, I am to a degree, but I do want to ask, I guess, even Economic Development folks, is that something that we want to do with our businesses, all of our businesses? Is this something new? Is this going to put a damper on future businesses wanting to come to Hayward? Hey, they're going to make you adopt a block? I'm, I'm a little leery about that.
Understood. There are conditions of approval about trash collection, and we do require that of all of our fast casual and, and those restaurants that have drive-throughs, or in this case, coffee shop with a drive-through. So there are conditions that they're supposed to maintain a certain perimeter around it to keep that clear. So there are already conditions related to that. I think Councilmember Andrews is asking for an additional condition related to that.
I will refuse the friendly amendment.
Okay, so you're, you're refusing the friendly amendment. Okay. And Councilmember Goldstein, I guess, sorry. Okay, so, so I guess it just dies, right, at this point since the makers don't want to? Yeah, okay. Okay, Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to thank the planning commission for their thoughtfulness in these recommendations. I appreciate kind of the pros and I appreciate the cons to this project. I think as we heard from Councilmember Cyrop, you know, I could understand why there's a perception that there's too many big chain coffee shops in the immediate vicinity. But I also do appreciate that this is going to be serving a different type of customer, the type of customer that's driving, you know, down Hisparian, needing to grab some coffee quickly, and will have a drive-through option available. So I'm also in support of this project. And I'm fine with the conditions that are in there around trash collection as well. I think that they're strong enough, so I would support the motion as it's been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will be supporting this tonight. I think I would just ask that Public Works and maybe in partnership with the Traffic Division of the Police Department keep an eye on changes of pedestrian behavior around this intersection. I just really don't want to open my inbox and find out someone got hit trying to get a cup of coffee. So if we need to at some point plan for a future restriping or painting program to add a pedestrian crosswalk there, I want us to be proactive about that if we're seeing a change in pedestrian behavior. This is what helps us make more walkable cities is by making sure there's direct paths to the amenities in our communities. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in favor of the proposal. And I do believe that our conditions of approval about trash collection are, are enough. And still, I would like our Economic Development Chief to kindly suggest to our new business owner here that they participate in adopt a block. I think it's something good that shows their heart for the community. And I think the added, you know, the added bonus of attention that we work with our businesses to help keep our neighborhoods clean while we provide excellent services to the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews, did you want to say something else?
Yes, I would encourage a property owner to work with Director of Maintenance Services to adopt a block. This is a big industry that could help keep our community clean if they're going to contribute to the litter in our community. And we should not be relying on volunteers for corporate, you know, you know, profits. So please make sure you adopt a block. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be supporting the item as well. I know the planning commission had some comments around architecture updates, or, you know, they were, some, some of them weren't interested in the architecture. But I do want to thank the applicant for including the Tuskegee Airmen Memorial, or plaques that are, that'll be inside. I guess there's one outside, right? And then, and then the other ones are inside. And I think that's a really nice touch for that area. And, you know, it brings in his, some of our history and hatred that I think we're really proud of. So, so I'm really pleased that you add that. And I will also be supporting the item. So with no other speakers, we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. Great. And it passes six to zero with one, with one absent. Thank you very much. Great. And next, we will move on to the item 13, the fiscal year 2026 Salary Plan Amendment. Let's see, hopefully, is that brought to us by our Assistant City Manager Youngblood? Is that right?
Great, thank you. This is a routine item that is going to be spoken to by our Deputy Director of HR, Ian Texan. And if we can get the presentation up.
Just to clarify, Mayor Protem, this is for the vacancy report, not the salary plan just yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Apologies. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that correction. And also Deputy Director Ian Texan will be making this presentation.
Thank you.
Along with some assistance from Selena Flores, manager of recruitment.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Youngblood. And good evening, Mayor Protem and Council and everyone here tonight. My name is Ian Texan, and I am your Deputy Director of Human Resources. This public hearing and presentation will cover an overview of Assembly Bill 2561 and related requirements. Presenting with me tonight is Selena Flores, Human Resources Manager over Recruitment and Classification. Before we begin, I'd like to give a special thank you to Megan McLean, Human Resources Analyst, and Annie Shao, Human Resources Technician, for their work and contributions to this report. And with that, we'll start with some background on Assembly Bill 2561. AB 2561 is part of Government Code Section 3502.3. It was signed into law on September 22nd, 2024, and effective on January 1st of this year. This is the first year that required employers are presenting this information. The council, as the governing board for the city, will be adopting an annual budget during the fiscal year, and this presentation is made in compliance with AB 2561 prior to the adoption of the final budget. During this presentation, you'll see current staffing vacancies and headcounts, recruitment and retention efforts and strategies, any hiring challenges and related strategies and recommendations. And for bargaining groups over a 20% vacancy threshold who have requested additional information, you will also see additional related data. A quick spoiler alert, no groups over the 20% vacancy threshold have requested additional data. As part of this public hearing, bargaining groups are entitled to make a presentation. At the end of our portion and prior to questions from your council, we will pass the floor back to Mayor Protem, and we ask that you invite unions forward to present. And with that, I will hand it to Selena.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protem Roach and Councilmembers. I'm Selena Flores, the Human Resources Manager over Recruitment and Classification. Tonight, I will be presenting information about the city's vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. The first slide focuses on citywide vacancy data from July 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025. The organization consists of 12 departments, as well as the mayor and city council, which render services to the public and community. For the fiscal year 24 through 25, the city has allocated a budget for 956.3 full-time equivalent positions. As of April 30th, 2025, the city has 90 vacant positions with an overall 9.4% citywide vacancy rate. Also during this timeframe, there have been 99 new hires, 110 promotions, and 63 separations. This table outlines the vacancy information for citywide employee groups as of April 30th, 2025. The citywide recognized unions are displayed in the top table, while the unrepresented groups are listed at the bottom. You will see the employee groups listed on the left, followed by the number of current vacancies, and then the total budgeted position count. The vacancy rate for each employee group is located on the right-hand side. If you take a look to the right of the table, you'll see that all groups have a vacancy rate of 20% or less, with the exception of the Fire Chiefs Association. This bargaining unit only has two employees and one vacancy, which resulted in a 50% vacancy rate. Okay, this slide represents recruitment statistics for July 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025, as well as a high-level overview of recruitment and retention strategies and efforts below. Over the reporting period, we have posted 100 job openings and received and processed 9,280 applications and successfully filled 199 vacancies. These positions were filled through a combination of open recruitments, promotional-only recruitments, and candidates selected from existing eligible lists. The Human Resources Department has also been diligently working to develop and implement various recruitment strategies to assist with attracting and retaining top talent while maintaining transparency, equity, diversity, and inclusivity. If you look at the bottom of this slide, we have outlined some of our current recruitment and retention strategies and initiatives. I would like to begin with our hiring incentives. Hiring incentives in the public sector are tools used to attract qualified candidates, especially for hard-to-fill positions. To support recruitment efforts and reduce time to fill for critical positions, hiring incentives have been implemented for public safety roles such as police officers and public safety dispatchers. These incentives aim to attract qualified candidates in a highly competitive market. In addition to hiring bonuses, the city also offers a competitive salary and benefits package, along with flexible work arrangements, which have been a strong incentive to attracting qualified candidates to work for our agency. Next, we'll talk about advancements we've made in recruitment diversity. We believe that our workforce should represent the communities that we serve, and therefore we've taken strides to strengthen our diversity recruitment efforts, and wanted to take a moment to highlight some of our key initiatives. We have begun to consistently track and review applicant demographic data in the recruitment process to improve diversity and recruitment efforts. We've also actively engaged and expanded our outreach through community events, job fairs, and online to promote diversity and job opportunities at the city. We continue to review and update our recruitment and selection processes to ensure that we're promoting fair and hiring practices and removing any unnecessary barriers to employment. Now we'll take a look at how we've worked to streamline recruitment efficiencies and how we've elevated the candidate experience. Over the past year, the recruitment team has focused on modernizing workflows and improving efficiencies within the hiring process. As an example, we've recently implemented the online onboarding module with the NeoGov, which is our applicant tracking system. This new online module allows candidates to complete and return their pre-employment forms digitally, resulting in reducing the time it takes to onboard a new employee, as well as enhancing the new hire experience for the department and the candidate by reducing the number of touchpoints in the process. Turning to the next area of focus is employer branding. We continually strive to enhance our employer branding efforts, whether that be through creating new recruitment outreach materials, modernizing our job postings, or partnering with the communications and marketing team to develop ways to enhance our social media presence. We also participate in community outreach and events to increase the city's visibility. We tailor our job postings and marketing materials to highlight our competitive salaries, flexibility, benefits, and career growth to endorse the city as an employer of choice. During the past year, we've also become certified as an age-friendly employer. The certi, the certificate indicates that the employee, the city is committed to being a positive and inclusive workplace for employees ages 50 and older. Next, we'll touch upon career development opportunities. The city values employee development and aims to foster a culture of growth and learning. The city provides its employees with various opportunities for succession planning and cross-training, coaching and mentorship, leadership programs, tuition reimbursement, and educational support, as well as internal promotional pathways. The city is also in the process of implementing a new digital learning management system, which will be helpful for organizing mandatory trainings, professional development, onboarding, and compliance courses. We will also continue to partner with our local communities and community partnerships, organizations, schools, and universities to participate in recruitment events, provide career guidance, and support to job seekers. And lastly, classification and compensation reviews. We regularly assess job classifications and compensation structures. These reviews ensure that the roles remain competitively benchmarked and that duties are properly aligned with job descriptions and pay. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, oh, sorry, are you going to continue? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to pass it back to you to please invite any unions forward as part of the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Yes, so this will be the time for any, any representatives to come forward and speak on this issue. Let's see, do we have any of the panelists online waiting to speak? I don't see any hands raised. And no one in, no one in the chamber that wants to speak to this, to the vacancy rate? No? I guess, and any of the panelists online wanted to say a quick word about this? Nope, I don't see any hands raised. Okay. Then, did you expect somebody to speak? You just wanted to take the moment. Okay, great. Then I'll move on to Councilmember Questions. Well, this, is this sort of a work session? We're not voting on anything tonight, is that right? Then, then why don't I go ahead and, if you, if that's okay with you, Councilmember? Okay. We'll go to public comment first on this item. And I don't, no one in the room to speak to this, right? And no one online? Okay, so we'll close public comment and go to Councilmember Questions and Comments. Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for the report. I know it takes a lot of work to pull together these numbers. I think in the past, we've also created some vacancy reports, but it wasn't motivated necessarily by this law. Is this a new law that went into effect?
Yeah, new for effective this year. What we'll be doing is incorporating pieces of this for our personnel commission. So that data will be combined.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, my hope would be, you know, I know that we're just checking a box here as it relates to the state law. We have prepared vacancy reports with a bit more detail in the past, and I want to make sure that we keep that standard up. Because had we not moved our budget conversation until June 17th, we actually would have heard the budget before we actually talked about vacancies. And I think it would actually be beneficial for the entire council to have this information before we make budget decisions. So my feedback here is really, I know this is just informational tonight, but I would love for this information to have a bit more detail and come to the council, you know, ahead of our budget conversation so that we can use that information to inform what we do in partnership with the city manager around the budget. And, you know, to that point, in the past, I think we've asked for information on how long a position has been vacant for, maybe when the most recent requisition was. So we could see, okay, yes, this position's very hard to fill, but a department director is trying to fill it constantly, and it's just a very difficult position to fill, just so we understand which positions have been vacant for a long time, and, you know, may or may not need to be allocated to other places. So really just thinking about how we can make this data actionable for the council and more than just checking a box. I really appreciate the work that goes into pulling all this information together. I recognize it takes time and can't happen very frequently. So how do we, when we decide to do it, kind of help it work in concert with other processes that are happening at the city level to make it, to provide the most use to the city possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this report. Very helpful. Just a few quick
Just a few quick questions. So is 9.4% vacancy, I guess, how does that compare to other jurisdictions? Is that high or low, or how should we interpret that number?
We're about right in the middle. So our neighbors are experiencing anywhere from a 6% to a 14% vacancy rate.
Got it. And then, I'm glad to see that we're promoting from within. It seems like we have a culture of doing that. If we've promoted 110 people over this reporting year, is that a fair sentiment?
Yeah, the city values internal growth. So you'll see that through a lot of the new programs that we're doing in terms of training and development.
I love that. You know, just cultivating our own staff to continue to grow into these leadership roles, I think, is the right way to do it. What have been some of the biggest recruiting hurdles that you've experienced over this reporting period?
I'd say one of the main recruiting hurdles was the uncertainty around remote work. But we were over that hurdle. That is a recruitment tool that we've been using very strongly to get people to work for the city of Hayward. As we know, talent doesn't necessarily live here in Hayward all the time, so we want to attract the best. Another opportunity that we've had was with our safety positions. They're very hard to recruit for, just in the profession of safety. So we've been doing things like incorporating different tools. Selena talked about the hiring incentives, so those have been helpful.
Excellent. I guess, you know, briefly, on the lines of remote work, what would, I guess, make a position eligible, or what would be the criteria to, you know, in the recruiting process to say this role is, you know, deemed eligible for remote work or not?
So currently, those parameters are under review, but right now, department directors are deciding which roles in their departments are eligible.
Got it. So it's at the discretion of every department director? There's not necessarily a uniform set of guidance that everyone is sort of keying on today to make those decisions?
That's correct. It's just, it has to be eligible for remote work if, so like, safety positions, if you're out in the field, those positions would not be eligible for remote work.
Got it. What does remote work mean? Does it mean you can work anywhere in the state? Does it mean you can work anywhere in the U.S.? Does it mean you can work anywhere in the world?
Right now, for us, it means you don't have to work in this building.
Got it. But I guess, what about the other parameters? Can you work outside of the U.S. or outside of the country if you're a remote worker?
Our current administrative rule would not allow for that because it doesn't specifically say that you can't work outside of the country, but it does indicate that you have to have a reasonable radius of being able to return to work when asked to, within a couple of hours. And so, once again, the flexible arrangements policy is actually under review, and those parameters are under review. And so what we hope to is add a little bit more specificity to the administrative rules so that those questions can be clearly answered and not left to the discretion solely of the department director.
Thank you so much. And then, going to councilmember Cyrep's question, one of the things that would be interesting maybe in future reports is understanding sort of what the average time to fill some of these positions are, so we can see, you know, kind of which ones are taking longer or which ones are a little bit quicker to fill. And then perhaps we can start to, you know, look at how we layer on incentives to some of the ones that might be a little bit longer but are more critical. Thank you so much again for this report, and thanks for taking my questions.
Thank you. Did you want to say something? Acting City Manager Lawson.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, you've asked some really important questions. So let me respond to a couple of those questions, starting with vacancies. A 9% or 10% vacancy rate in the abstract might equate to, let's say, $10 or $12 million in a general fund budget. And that's part of the conversation we're having internally and will be presented with the budget on the 17th. As a practical matter, managing vacancies is going to be the real challenge starting July 1st. And that's going to require an effort of managers, directors, department heads, and city manager's office. Because we're going to have to make some hard decisions about which positions are going to be filled and which positions are not going to be filled in order to save as much as possible in that conversation. I think right now, we're probably putting in the budget somewhere around 1.5 to 5 million, give or take, as a, as a way of managing vacancies in order to address the budget deficit. On the issue of remote work, once we get past the budget on the 17th, we'll return to that question so that it's not on pause. There's about 150 employees, 150 to 200, who've had remote work flexibility through the pandemic and post-pandemic. Most employees, probably 700 or more employees, did not have flexible work options: PD, fire, maintenance services, water treatment workers, and so on and so forth. So there is an, I'd call it an equity question in addressing the return-to-work analysis. But offices are going to be open. They're going to be open every day. They're going to be staffed every day with professional staff and support staff. There will be some flexibility in how managers make that happen, but as a general proposition, we're going to be returning to the office with some flexibility as soon as we can start that analysis after the budget is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Acting City Manager Lawson. And that was kind of the nexus to why I wanted to understand how long some of these positions have been open, but I guess we'll get to that discussion with the budget. Because if some of these positions have been sitting open for six or seven or eight months, I mean, one might say, do we really need it? But I think that you guys will come up with the right sort of budgeting methodology to determine what kind of vacancy savings could actually be achieved. And it seems like you're coming up with a very thoughtful approach to methodically go through all of these positions in light of the budget conditions and making sure that we're being prudent in how it is we're hiring. Because, you know, the last thing we want to do is hire, and then maybe, you know, I mean, we never want to get in a position of doing a layoff, so it would always be better to see what we can do on the front end when the positions are still open. And I appreciate your diligence in leading us through that discussion. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Aranio.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much. Michael, that's exactly what I was looking for in the sense that my two questions were how do these vacancies affect our budget and how can we play with them? And the other one, I guess, is more directed towards Ms. Flores and your team. Do we still advertise job openings with a hybrid component?
Yeah, that's a good question. So at this time, we are, we do put a clause in our job postings, I believe that says flexible, flexible work schedule or alternate work benefits. We don't get specific, but we do put that in right now as it is being offered.
Okay, so there's, okay, all right, that was, okay, I can see that as a problem, but I imagine that you will take care of it, or it will be taken care of, one way or another. Mr. Lawson?
It's a problem we're going to solve.
Okay, yeah, yes, and I do agree with you, the problem of equity. And I believe that, yes, our E-team, our managers can certainly come up with some kind of a formula as to what is more equitable in certain divisions and departments. So, good first presentation, and thank you for the report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you for the report. Yeah, you know, one of the concerns that came up for me is I heard, I don't know if it's true, but I heard some accusations, if you will, that some people were living out of state and collecting Silicon Valley rate of pay. And I have a little bit of a problem with that. Our negotiations for the rate of pay here are within understanding that this is a very expensive place to live, and we weren't necessarily intending for people to, you know, in my opinion, it's kind of an abuse of that policy to collect Silicon Valley rate of pay and be living somewhere else. So I heard you loud and clear, you're taking care of that, and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to reiterate that as a concern. My other area of concern, and we're going to have to address this in the budget talks, is what does a 9.4% vacancy rate do to our overtime and other costs? So there might be cost-of-miss-opportunity programs that we're not eligible for, or it could be we don't have, you know, grant writing or something else. So I would like during our budget discussions to be able to talk about what that 9.4% vacancy rate actually does to the budget. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, were you asking a question, or you were just wondering that for the budget? Okay. Great, okay. Thank you. Yeah, with no other questions, I just want to thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for, you know, giving the detail on recruitment strategies. That was really interesting and helpful to see everything that you're doing to try to fill these vacancies. So thank you, yeah. And if you, right, that's all you need from us? We're not voting on this or anything like that. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great, and now we will move on to item 13, the Salary Plan Amendment. By Assistant City Manager Youngblood.
By popular demand, Deputy Director Ian Texan is back to present you with this next report.
Great, thank you.
So I am here again tonight to ask council to adopt a resolution approving amendment to the city of Hayward salary plan for fiscal year 2026. Updates to the salary plan include negotiated and approved increases for classifications in HPOA at 5.5% and 4% for SAU clerical and maintenance units, Local 21, HAME, the unrepresented group, and also for the city attorney and city clerk. A separate additional adjustment for the police lieutenant as part of the MOU of 1.25% is also included in this change. These increases are included in the fiscal year 2026 proposed operating budget and pose no additional fiscal impact for the fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. Short and sweet. Okay, council questions? No questions? I don't see any questions? Great. The one thing I wanted to be clear that I wanted to ask you is, these were previously negotiated adjustments, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and they were already contemplated in the budget?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, do we need to?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Sorry, go ahead.
The city clerk and I need to recuse because our positions are affected by this action.
Okay.
And so I'm going to recuse because my other job is part of this action. So the city clerk and I are going to leave the room.
Okay, and then we're getting to administer this vote? Okay.
Assistant City Manager Youngblood, please take over.
Thank you. Okay, and I guess first I have to go to public comment. Let's see if there, I didn't look to see, no public comments in the room. I don't see any hands raised. Do you agree with that? Okay, we will close public comment. City council discussion? Okay, can I get a, this is motion one, right? Is this, okay, sorry, who moved? So moved by Councilmember Cyrep, seconded by Councilmember Zumania. And if there's no further discussion, let's take a vote. All right, and that passes 6 to 0 and 1 absent. Thank you so much for the presentation. That's 2 and 1-8. Thank you. Great, let's move on to council reports and announcements. Anyone? Oh, let's see. Councilmember Cyrep.
Just wanted to say congrats on leading your first meeting, Mayor Pro Tem Roach. Nice work.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Andrews, did you have something?
Yes, I have a few announcements. Guess I'm all about disposing of trash tonight because disposal day is on June 14th. You can go to the Hayward website to get more information about what are the times and locations of that, but you can check also what they will accept. So make sure you go to the Hayward website to learn more about disposal day. It's a very popular program, so if you have household items you want to dispose of and not dump, you can go to the Hayward website for more information. Also, wanted to acknowledge East Bay Discharges Authority. I sit on that board. They actually had an interview on NBC Bay Area Open Road regarding the First Mile Living Levy Project at the Oreloma District. We share an outfall into the bay in that joint powers authority, so just wanted to let you all that that is available on NBC Bay Area. And then the last thing I would like to mention is that we have a Hayward resident, who's an 11-year-old Hayward resident by the name of Elena Darby, who will be going to the Little League World Series. So we just want to wish her congratulations, and hopefully she'll bring back something to her hometown, but I'm hoping that we can give her a proclamation later on when she returns. So congratulations, Elena Darby, and the Mount Eden Little League team.
Great. Yes, Councilmember Cyrep.
Thank you. And I'm excited to share that the Hayward Night Market is making a comeback this year to the six people that are probably still streaming this meeting online. On June 28th, that is a Saturday later this month, from 4:00 to 9:30 p.m. at the St. Rose parking lot, that's 27200 Caleroga Avenue in Hayward, there'll be live music, food, entertainment, crafts, giveaways, and local orgs. So I hope to see you there. I think last time we had over a few, I think, a few thousand people last time, and we sold out of all our food, so I'm hoping this year's event is even bigger. You can follow, before I forget, @hayward_night_market on Instagram for more updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? An announcement, no? One more from Councilmember Andrews?
Since we're doing June, Juneteenth is going to happen 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Heritage Plaza, June 21st. So be there, there will be performances, the Cowboys are coming back, and things for youth, and all kinds of DJs and dance performances, all that, so please come by.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bonilla, yeah?
All right, my only comment is happy pride to everybody. Our city did raise the flag, I think, on Sunday. Hopefully next year, though, we could have a pride-raising ceremony, because it would be great to have the community out, no matter what day it is, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, we should have a pride-raising ceremony as an annual thing here in the city. But I just wanted to say happy pride generally to everybody and let you know that our flags are flying bright in Hayward.
Thank you. Yeah, we usually, all right, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bonilla. Councilmember Goldstein.
Oh, thanks. June 28th is National Field Day, and that's an overnight from about 11 o'clock in the morning until 11 o'clock Sunday. So it's a Saturday, Sunday, June 28th, 29th. Field Day is when all of the radio volunteers in the community come out of the woodwork and set up shop out in public areas. So if you see radio antennas or something unfamiliar waving in the sky that looks metallic, feel free to walk over and go, hey, what do you guys do? I will be out there, it's part celebration, it's part contest, but it's mostly an opportunity for the public to get to know what volunteer radio is all about. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next meeting will be June 17th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, everyone, for putting up with me tonight. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I'm not giving up the gavel. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.